Following the meeting to order. First off, thank all of you for coming out and make sure that any of your questions, hopefully we will be able to get them answered. We're going to start off with the presentation from on three Brandon Millie Trust on three Centennial Court. For those who I know you guys are in the neighborhood, it's that that building with all this looks like a really dilapidated barn with multiple stalls back there. With the plows and bikes piled up right inside, it's that building there. But the parts of us, there is actually land. It's letting me move that awful part of the soul thing. But anyways, gentlemen, you want to introduce yourselves and make sure that she gets your names correctly for the minutes. We'll have you present what you'd like to do down there. I will then open it up to the board first for questions. And then, just as importantly, I will also open it up to the public for the question. For the public part, it actually goes through me technically, so we tend to have a pretty casual conversation back and forth, but we it does go through the chairman.
But Sean.
Yes, good evening, Attorney David Clegg from Neil and Neil and Clegg. Brandon Millie Trust. I hear Matt now. From Real Pet Trust, the owner, as well as Scott Richardson from Orman Richardson Lewis, the architect, and George Connors from engineering. Before we start off, I just wanted to ask a note for tonight, I'm assuming that the fifth member will be joining just by multiple.
Yeah, he he was, he works for the gas company, unfortunately. When things come up, it's not the little stuff, he does the giant pipelines. When they have a problem, they're not able to say no, but fortunately, what's the name of the act that allows the person to watch the video?
Law.
Well, all of that allows him to watch and then be a participating member in the vote at the end. And we certainly want him. He's a good guy, he very rarely misses. After that fiasco, they head up on the Lawrence. No one ever says no, but they say, yeah.
Can I ask you who the fourth member was? I apologize, I heard David Clegg, Matt now, Scott Richardson.
And George Connors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to interrupt.
So we're here before the board. We're here before the board on an application for special permit as well as seeking some relief. Some variances. With regards to this property, as you, the chair just noted, currently there is a dilapidated vacant five bay garage that is existing on the property. On the southwestern portion of the lot. It is the intent to raise that barn, which is currently preexisting, or should say that the garage, which is preexisting, nonconforming from a dimensional standpoint, and actually create a five unit residential. There, as you can see in the proposed building. That's been provided on the screen. This property, before getting into just the actual development itself, just want to go back a little history, this property was previously owned by the Merrimack Cat Company. It is, as you see, just one defined property, it has a right of way that runs through it. It is surrounded to the northeast and the southeast by two multifamily homes and then to the north by series of residential and single family homes. Till you meet east to the north. What we're looking to do is have this five unit townhouse with a garage underneath. Living space above. Walkway, as you can see, surrounding the building, whether it's inclusive, whether or not that would be concrete or in speaking with with Michael. And hearing from the building commissioner, whether or not that could be or remain grass. What we like to have and what you can see here in the site plan is that as a garage underneath, there's also outside of allowing for parking for a single in the garage, there's 25 parking spaces that surround the space. So there's 14 spaces on the northern side of the way and there the remaining. See. Eleven spaces on the southern side. So. Yeah, this is for a residential. Residential use, the building will, although it is within the side and rear setbacks. They are making this build more or less preexisting or less nonconforming than what exists right now. I guess just at this point, we're happy to open up for what questions there may be, the pack that essentially explains what's there. In terms of where this way is as well as where the proposed building is.
We're hoping to see something come less nonconforming.
And I guess, Mr. Chair, I may remember some time ago, maybe a couple of years ago, I actually came before the board on an informal meeting, just to get get an idea of what the board felt in relation to this build using composite materials, moving it further away from the what's now the existing multifamily that's owned by Centennial Court LLC. And to essentially have this blend into what's otherwise a residential use, although in the CNI zoning district, which awards for this use, subject to a special permit, so. I guess just first and foremost, that's.
The design was very rich, native, very, very simple. Five years ago. That the state actually put out as an example of how things. Are any of these going to be? You want to say affordable?
We had made a decision on it being affordable. We're falling under, unfortunately.
What's, what's the? It's the magic number, one has to be six, six, and this is five. I mean, it's not a very big. I can understand that. There's not room for six down there, can I guess? Let me actually down there. I'm going to just open up to the board, I've said all this beforehand, it's pretty clear. Eric, you're, you're getting. You won't come to your last or you haven't come to your last?
Yeah, we'll be last.
How about you, sir? If you have any specific questions. Mike?
I just have a very simple question, I may admit it, in your question. Yes. That other property is in the same color as the four you find units, but is that a part of this?
But that is an existing multifamily.
Is that part of this?
No, no, so again, I mean, you can see that the, it's all part of this property, but the property is essentially divided into two pieces. Say three, I mean, I provided an exhibit three, historically, what this looked like, I mean, what it is right now is a that was previously a 13 bay garage, then there was a garage to the north of that right way. Just to the northwest of it, so those have since been removed, but the, yeah, the, it's all one continuous, at least that's right now, but divided. Which essentially also just given, kind of touching upon the variance aspect of this, it's really three tiered, it's the shape, soil and the topography. And it's defined by the topography coming off the back of the of this proposed build. This weapons just trail them off the directly to the west, so just given the unique circumstances of what I'd otherwise, it's a regularly shaped lot in general, but as it's divided by the right of way to where this proposed building is, it's somewhat constrained in the back because of the topography. And because of the shape with with the way and then just where kind of have a stormwater plan. A creative, there's no basement would be part of this build, the stormwater is going to be that lowest part, we're going to need all of the space that we can within our way and we're construct that, which we haven't gotten to completely yet, but.
Well, I will say, I was glad I looked at the parking. You're looking at essentially five parking spots for apartments of that would be, which is the ratio we use is 1.5, 1.6, something like that.
And it's the industry standard for the development of this density.
So this is, this is.
The, the, my guess now is right, the plan used inspection service. The the bylaw for townhouses and garden apartments is actually very stringent, I was going through it today, I realized that it's one parking spot, is it one park, no, it's one parking spot has to be 250 square feet, I think it was, but it was one space for every also bedroom, I think it was, plus a
I think this
plus an extra.
So this exceeds by
Yeah, I mean, he's at like a 4.9 ratio or something like that.
There's actually a parking for that. Is that Yeah.
Plus, this also. Like many old dilapidated barns, stuff just gets stacked around it. That gets cleaned up, that is real parking, that can be, you know, can have some good effects. These guys are digesting their packets, so I'm going to let them digest for a little bit, and I want to open it up to the, to the people around and I only see one neighbor they're familiar with. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm Mark out 143 Main Street. David Victorian. Questions. I mean, first, Mike, on the layout there. Curious, it says proposed five building, my eyes, my eyes and my ears ago, but five residential and then does it say five con? Under it, it says 10 units.
It's, it's five, no.
Five.
It's five.
But Do you see where it's on the right here?
Yeah.
Why doesn't it say 10 units?
Yeah, that's a typo.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, okay.
No, hey, good catch.
Yeah.
Sorry, I guess it's in front of me. Do you have front elevation by chance? Oh, there we go, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good, thanks. That's. I, I walked down there.
Yes.
I've got to tell you, it's, this is a great improvement. And, and I'm, what I see, I'm in support of it, are they going to be condominiums or apartments? Yeah, apartments. And so this is my line of rights, Mike already brought it up to me or brought it up saying that we're going to the west section meeting, but here is the entrance to the roadway, which is a joke. It's nothing but a sea of asphalt.
Yeah.
And it's horrible, no curb appeal, no sidewalks, no green space, has nothing to do with these guys. Okay, and they're improving it, which I am fully in support of, but I think that the town, I don't know if the town has plans on improving the actual roadway, but it needs, it needs a lot, it doesn't look good.
That's why I was going by his house, looks much nicer coming from that side. Yeah, no, like, thank you for your comments and, and please, just can you guys update that plan and make sure that gets in here, because we don't want to cause confusion with anybody.
Oh, with the rest of the
Everything else says five, I didn't actually. I looked at that one. Anyone else that wants to make comments, yes, sir.
James, we've been selling change in the wiki. Zooming time for about 60 years. Even partners for 40 plus years. The Alco that runs. When the street has to be improved long before something else happens, we're, we're all lucky that that little pond left hasn't had major accidents, they've been a
I call that area the public rabbit war, because the building is so close together.
We've asked, you know, nicely, we've had. So we live in what's either still or not one Russell Court. But you changed it from two or Russell L, but not officially on many of them. We had a tenant. Not a habitat. I didn't like it, by the way. Don't worry. But we couldn't, the fire chief said, they couldn't find.
Yeah, that's something I've put up in my house, I've been trying to get the fire chief, you've never heard of the 911 numbers?
Yeah.
We're trying to get the night, those really bright reflective numbers on everybody's houses. Get a grant for that.
We've got, we've got to exist. Russell Lab has to be a real street, right now, we're sort of an alley.
Yeah, yeah.
By the way, Matt's been a good neighbor. We were talking about good people all the way around here. I don't know if people will wear it to me later, but we have to do the street first, we've come up, we've had three town managers who Joe was fine. Who's the, the female who was?
Life.
Life, yeah, she actually stopped plowing our street.
Yeah, it's, I mean, there's always, like, I concur that it needs a refresh, I think this could be part of that refresh, because it definitely looks.
It's dangerous, it's, it's dangerous, it's, there are potholes, there's ice.
Yeah, no, I don't even think the space between the building, that little road to get into Russell there is legal with road. And it's called the travel way, but we can't knock down someone's building to make the road light, that's not what we're going to do.
However, there are a few things to do. Our property in Russell.
Yeah.
And which was Russell Court. We can make a circular thing with all, but it's not meaningful.
Yeah.
What we're proposing now, we have cars backing up. All products, UPS, Amazon. Every dog walker and optim wants to walk down that street. Certainly things have gotten better, but the street has before anything else happens. It's got to be a real street with, you know, attendant parking.
So here's my question to you guys, parking. How, how far out? Like down there, I'm not sure what's townland with road, what's yours, are you guys going to pave all that that's in front of it, I mean, it's not.
So if I could, and this is actually a good place to be, on Monday, Michael and I town manager. Director of VPW, we met, which I appreciate they gave me the time, and Dennis had mentioned to me that actually, if we could bring back that, Matt.
Sure.
So Dennis had mentioned to me that to the, that northeastern portion of Russell Ave running off of Main Street. So further up. From his findings that come directly from his surveyor, that that is owned by the town. It's inconclusive as to once it drops down to the south into three Centennial Court, who owns that piece? And then the surveyor whom I candidly am not aware of. Yep, yep, so so I'm, really our focus is, because Dennis had mentioned, he was informed by the surveyor. The surveyor's of the position that the right of way that runs through three Centennial is owned by the town, there is nothing that is of record that I have found would show that. And I think it would also be supplemented by a, this plan from 1950 from the Merriman Cat Company that shows that this is a dotted right of way. And then it's also consistent with the deeds that have backed down through time, which shows that outside of maybe some of other properties to the west. That for one reason or other, in some older surveys don't close, this one does, and so I, I, but I think we left it at, and I know Michael had mentioned in his, in his, his comments that it would be conclusive tonight until we find, determine that, and that's fair, but I would just submit to the board, we wanted to get in front of you to give you a flavor of what this improvement to that space looks like, and we wouldn't have brought it forward if we had any inclination that there was an ownership of the town, you know, coupled with the fact, you know, the applicants to pay taxes on it. So, but I'm happy to hear from the surveyor and, and what findings he has.
Yeah, I mean, if it's a, if it's your, if it is property of that street, but if it's, if it's actually yours, but it's a right of way and use it, if you wanted to repave it, make it look nicer, we would not be upset with that.
Oh, in terms of the improvement, sure.
You know, we wouldn't be upset at all, I can't guarantee, I can't force the town. Make that circle, that street. We go to the selectmen for that or put the bug in his ear to get the selectmen to do that.
Okay, I guess. On the wisdom streets approved. Russell Ave is there. What's a real street supposed to have been?
Yeah, it's tough with the preexisting nonconforming, that, that's the hardest part is, some of these streets, in this one included, were built long before we had zoning, so we try and apply the modern zoning rules to these parts of town that just they just don't fit. And that's why we have a board with public meetings to get your input, to get everybody's input. And then we can try to make decisions, we don't always make everybody happy. But we have had a lot of citizens contribute ideas that have got put into the final permits that have really, really made some nice improvements to places. I compliment the public when they do come forward. Because I, as I say, I don't know who has the ownership, will probably delay a month to get, get that sorted out. I don't think, knowing that you guys were here two years ago, or how many years ago it was, I know you're not like fighting to get it done this week, but if we can resolve this, get this taking, I don't like stuff sitting on the dock and for, you know, three, four, five months, I don't like that. I'd rather resolve in two months, but I don't know.
Through the chair. Yeah, I mean, this is the first of many meetings that, yeah. All of which Steve Butters will receive notifications for, so they're here tonight for a special permit and the variances. But more importantly, really the special permit, which is for the use, the use of a townhouse slash garden apartments. Which in the CNI district is allowable by special purpose. There's a requirement within that bylaw that they must also file site plan approval with the planning board.
Yes, and that's another opportunity for everyone to go forward.
Yeah, and so this planning board for this town treats those as public hearings, so they get, folks get notified of that. And then what I haven't had a conversation with the applicant about is whether or not conservation commission will be required, my sense is that it will be, given that there's buffers on the
I've been in touch with the conservation agent and let her know that we'll be in touch.
I imagine, I don't know, buffers. At the very least, it will require an RDA, request for determination, given that's within the 100 foot buffer, I imagine you'd be filing for an NOI, which you know, the neighbors would get notice of that meaning as well. So again, first of many public hearings.
Yes, sir.
My name's Bruce Grant, I live on Russell Ave.
Yep.
I, I've lived there for about 25 years. I'd also like to speak to the current usage of the road, I'd echo the previous comments about currently that lot, the building that's there right now is right on the edge of probably a 30 foot drop down to the wetlands. So, you know, the, the proposed picture of the building is beautiful, which displays a backyard. I can't imagine how you fit a backyard in behind that, because current building is on the edge of the hill. And there's, and the current building, there's also not there's not even room to park one car from the pavement to that building, there's maybe 10 feet of length, so I don't, I don't know if that picture is a reality. They, they also, also that, that lot currently is probably at least half to three quarters full parking for other houses that are there now. So I guess my concern is, when I think of five units, I think of 10 cars possible. And, you know, plus visitors or whatever, and when that current lot is at least half full already, I'm curious where all these people are going to park. And I'd also speak to, echo the previous comment too about delivery vehicles, that is pretty much a turnaround. Everybody comes down Russell Ave from 140, which, when you enter 140, you, I mean, when you enter Russell Ave, you can't even have two cars side by side entering. The police often, often park there and I can't even get on my street, so to add all these other vehicles, I'm concerned about when you go out the back of the, the back of the road, you're literally going by, so your, your mirrors on your car are almost up against both buildings.
It's very narrow.
And the neighbors like to line up their trash cans in that alleyway as well, so it narrows it up even more, so all the delivery vehicles that come down use that whole area as a turnaround, so it makes me wonder how that's going to happen.
Yeah, I think that's one of the reasons, I'm assuming that's one of the reasons why you chose to put the garages under the apartments.
That's, that's correct, yeah, so you can see in this site plan, I mean, there is no backyard, I can appreciate.
Yeah, so yeah.
Our concept was to give a good concept of what the building looks like, here shows, you know, it's going to be a slope on the back with a three foot walkway around. And then with regards to addressing residential for the people who live there. There's going to be a garage underneath with a parking space in front, which will open up the 20 other available parking spaces.
Yeah. Yep, Bruce, something legitimate.
How many parking spaces are there now?
Well, it's not really delineated, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to.
Yeah, it's just a mess at the moment. And there's, there's also trailers and plows and
So when we're talking about the road development, we're thinking as this whole improvement, you know.
I mean, they're both, they're both right, they were, yeah. The parking underneath. I would assume you'd get sometimes, at least some of the apartments would have two, two cars. But I think we go like, if we have 1.6, you know, that's where it actually does work out. Yeah, I mean, it's right back there. Yeah. And just, unless I clean the shit up, will help. I definitely concur. Unfortunately, one of the challenges we have is, is space often that, that isn't being actively used by an owner. Everyone in the neighborhood will use that space for everything from trash bins that I have, you know, a boat trailer. And unfortunately using something to park your boat trailer or put your trash bin there doesn't make it yours. I think if we, knowing that trash bins are a concern, bringing it to these guys, they've got some landscaping here, maybe knowing that trash bins is a concern, they'll add something like that to their plan. I'm not saying you have to, but be cognizant, that is the problem, you're absolutely right, there's a hell of a drop off off of that. But when you show it from above, unless you've got to put topographic lines in, it's not, you're not showing, you're not seeing it that way. I would also recommend that you, is this by any chance going to be sprinkled?
Yes.
Okay. Just when you have that much density, being a sprinkle is kind of a safety thing.
And town water and sewer, I think you
Yes.
Question on that.
A building right around the corner there, gentleman passed away in
It's in the existing condition.
It's in the existing condition, plain color. Show the paving, it's sort of parking or open space that's there now. And that's all going to be changed to a much larger area for parking. A lot of it is what it is.
Yes, I mean, obviously, one of the first things I saw that you guys thought about the park. And we do appreciate that. Sorry, Robert, do you do, do we have a copy of the existing?
I don't have a copy of that.
You don't?
All right, now, guys, I'm gonna I want to circle back to the board. It looks like they're done digesting. And before I do that, is there any other comments? Bruce, thank you for your comment.
I'm Sue Crosby.
Yeah.
This way, also live at two Russell, been there for twenty-five years.
Mother of how many?
Mother of eleven.
Mother of eleven, this is one of the few whom I've known and great kids.
Thank you. I'm very concerned about putting five units in there. The street, while there are various multifamily houses around, the character of the neighborhood is quiet. There are children playing in the streets. As has been mentioned, the condition of the street is terrible. The pass-through is dangerous. But there are kids who go out there and play. And again, the thought of the more potential cars in the neighborhood is very concerning for safety, for noise. I'm also concerned about the watershed that's right down the hill. And as far as I can see, it's going to change the character of the neighborhood a lot. And that's a great concern to me.
Thank you. Definitely, one thing that's interesting, and I'm gonna ask, if you know we're gonna keep this document, I'd like all of you in the neighborhood, you guys in particular, come up and see where the where the garage currently is, it's 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 moved, like basically where the snowplows are. But the apartment building is back. I would say ten feet back, but it's all over to the right where the snowplows are, all the pile, all the piled up. On the right hand side, that's where the building is. The old building is basically gone. And it feels really tight as you come around that way past the house where the building is, because everything's really packed in. That building is where the existing garage is, it's gone. It's in the plans, it's gone out of there. And it's moved over to where the plows are.
Through the chair, I just I've zoomed in on it and the proposed plan up here. So the green space that I have centered around the mouse, it might maybe hard to see, but it says existing garage. That green space is where the existing garage is and will be removed. Is it, is this the end?
That's the edge of it, yes.
Yeah, that's the edge of it currently. See, it extends a little bit into the first unit here and all the way over to the within two feet noted right here, two feet of the property line on that side.
I'm saying how it's that it's opening the choke point. There's not much land down there. Can't be opened much.
You'll see on that that map where it says traveled way, I mean, the building's a, it looks like it says thirteen feet wide.
Yeah, it's tiny. They don't own those buildings. We can't tear down someone's building. Yes, sir.
I'll see the chair, Scott Richardson, architect for the project. And just to clarify, you know, kind of the layout of these units, basically each one has a garage under on the first floor.
Yep.
And then there's stairs up to a studio apartment, which is a studio space, open kitchen, bathroom, and an open studio space. So I would envision, and we were thinking, you know, kind of more of a workforce contractor might be living there. I can't imagine a couple having kids, living in a studio apartment, although we don't.
Are they all, are they all one bedroom?
They're no bedroom. So they're all studio, totally open floor then. Open floor, you go upstairs and it's just all open. So it's just a studio, five studio apartments, each one above a garage.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure.
Yes.
That raises a concern for me also that it wouldn't be somebody who is thinking about children and used to children playing in the street. And if it's just a working single person, they're going to be flying in and out.
I don't think I you can't fly. It's eleven feet wide.
You should come by.
Yeah.
I lived on High Street, Bruce, come on. You want to talk about flying, but no, you guys have a lovely place and and you want to protect it. And your place is absolutely stunning. I've always loved your house with the front porch and all night yards and never mind all the wonderful kids running around. So I totally understand your concerns. We're not making any decisions tonight. But one thing we try to do is when we have buildings that are basically derelict, it's not uncommon for us to try to encourage it to get improved. What that improvement becomes is negotiation worked out through things like this. All right, I'm gonna open up to you guys. Do you now have enough time to even work through your packets here for your questions? Mike, for our question or like? So I assume, just to make a confirm, the reason we're not talking about a special permit for the eventual apartments is because this is being moved, right? So we can't consider it as a extension or alteration.
And you've changed the use completely, a garage to the residences.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I just have one more comment. It will be quick. The surveyor, we have found the street comes in, we're centennial quarters, there's now a fence that shouldn't shouldn't have been put up, that separates the
The one by Stephanie's.
Yeah.
Yeah, there it is, yep.
Cody's or whatever it is now. It does a nice job, but it inhibits the flow and I'm not sure who owns all of that. So when you do the
Assuming who owns that building, I don't think the town put that up.
I have no idea.
I know it went up when Stefan, went up while Stephanie was there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure who did what. My job, oh, I said I'd take the second. My job was to keep Jane Whitney in this house.
Yes.
She has Alzheimer's, as good as, and she does great with it.
I think one of the interesting things to me is the building in front that had the fire. That we, it took some special permits for us to allow them to build that new building there. But I think it really upgraded that.
Absolutely.
Really improved how things look, because that thing was, it was literally and figuratively a death trap.
How it wasn't a fire years ago.
I know, but it's sad. It killed somebody, you know.
It is.
I think I think that that with improving that, as we improve things, like I'd like to see that place look. I mean, that's part of the a lot of our seniors that had factory, I'd like that area. So they can get the seniors out walking. Do I think this is the end all be all? I don't know, but it's one building at a time, it's improving.
We might be able to come up with some suggestions between landowners, what we concede. When I was in our land also is we would have a driveway that's over a right of way that there are things we can do before we
And keep getting
Have an arm wrestling.
Get the DPW involved, because I don't even know how to get up the big plow trucks through that, that little
And also say, in the in the mention of plowing, when they plow the street in the winters, plow one car wide.
Yeah.
They, when the plows come through, they're at least six feet from the front of my lawn.
Yeah, if this isn't, like, I'm encouraged that if it's an apartment, they are responsible for snow removal. So they would have to hire somebody in. You know, there's no way you can have twenty-five spots and not have someone cleaning.
So through the chair, I venture a guess that the town probably owns that curb you see. And Cody's restaurant, whoever the owner is, probably owns that fence. Based on one of, uh, but yeah, we can confirm that with DPW.
Yeah, parking's always been a problem down there. I mean, just a huge problem.
There never been times everybody walked to the hat factory, go to work.
There you go.
That's what it was.
Was, yeah.
We keep saying garage. That was a carriage house.
That's right.
For the
Yep.
By the way, my Jane worked in that. There's many of the people who are still residing there.
Yeah.
And it wasn't easy, easy work. So but there are things we can do before we start arm wrestling on the tables.
Yeah.
And I think we'll be there were there's some suggestions. I mean, the street's got to be a street. It can't be an ice rink.
Yeah. Yeah, and 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 just running, I mean, eleven feet is just not not much.
It's an alley.
Yeah. Right away.
Through the chair, do we need proposed drainage? Is there drainage that's existing?
No, we'll be doing infiltration under the that area that's great.
There's tools that run down, run down Russell F. I mean, so in in many of the infrastructure things, you know, it's a real street.
Yeah.
Just down road.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that this will pull it back. It's not pulling it back much, five, five feet or something like that. Off of one. Moving, the building is moving away from the center of the street by I forget. No, I think it's it's in it's in here, but it's in here, you know.
Judging from that, it looks between five and ten. From the existing building.
Not much, but you know, it's the distance from me to Mike, which makes
As we're recording, twenty-four feet of pavement.
And then you can do it, has to travel away. Right, where you where you can do it. And then there's there's always going to be that bottleneck because the building, but you don't own that building, so you can't.
Can I, can I, I'm sorry about it. I just want to make sure I'm in the right place. I'm in Sutter, I believe, of Centennial.
Yeah, yeah.
Welcome.
I own number five, right? So I just want to understand, are they talking about the barn?
Yes.
You want to knock the barn down and and build a five unit?
Yeah, Mike, can you show this gentleman with your mouse?
I'm sorry, I got here late.
If you can sign in, just to sign in here. And I'm gonna have Mike just show you where the existing building is. And thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chair, what I'd add to, and Michael may remember, I mean, some years ago when we, prior to Mike formal meetings, we we did meet with at the time the building commissioner and as well as the fire chief, to get the fire chief's
Yes.
And this is what it was, which was sprinkler.
Yes.
And we had to get a unit away from this challenge.
So sprinkling is very important. Unfortunately, I'm not chief.
Yep.
But
Are you here?
We're just trying to help him get caught up here.
I'll read out like this way and help us out.
Existing conditions. Oh, here, you can see it right here.
Oh, yeah, you're right here.
So this is where the existing barn is.
You're right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's the existing barn.
Yeah.
And if I go back to the plan.
Okay. Uh, just you can look at it, if you return it, I'm just fine. It's fine.
Yeah, that's So this is you in the white all the way to the bottom of the screen, existing dwelling, that's you. Centennial quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so there shows in the green where lawn is proposed, that's where most of the structure currently is.
Okay.
And then in the yellow, proposed buildings, that's where the the proposal will be.
Okay, it's moved to the right and a little bit.
Further away from that.
Okay. What about the park, five?
Twenty, it is twenty-five. For five units is up to fifty.
Yeah, that's a lot, because the reason I asked is when I bought my property, it's four. And to make it a five, I had to
Add.
Do some stuff, but they said you needed two for each, which is all ten.
Yeah. All right, we're gonna be ending the continuing this tonight anyways, no matter what. I just want to make sure I hit everybody in the board, make sure everyone has any comments. You have some other questions, uh, circulating to the
Yes, again, I have my review with a couple of questions. You see that they've answered a couple of them tonight already. Some of my questions will really be contingent upon conversations with the building commissioner that I'm having as well as possibly the planning board as well. One of my biggest questions was how this bylaws written.
So to that point, if I could, Michael, and thank you for sending the review in advance. There's a question about open space. I would just ask, in reviewing that bylaw and taking it in its nonambiguous terms, seven point two point one focuses on residential A, residential B, as it applies A through G as it relates to the eight thousand square feet. I am of the position, if you read that, that the intent of the bylaw was not to allow or not to add the CNI zoning district into that bucket, which would then require one of either a waiver or variant. Initially, I'd come in on that issue for a waiver, but I'm just, that that's my in information.
I'm totally fine with that interpretation. I I theorized it as well. I mean, the, it's clear to me that the bylaw, the header of that section, you get the seven point two townhouses and garden apartments, very first paragraph, which is the header of the entire bylaw, everything else is a subsection of that. It clearly states that these provisions apply to SRA and SRB. We are in the CNI for this one. So and and within that, it it talks about, in that opening paragraph, it talks about the minimum of lot size for the individual units. All of which would have been prohibitive for this application you see for you, but I I mean, I think that first paragraph is very clear that it only applies to my question about that bylaw as it proceeds down the line for subsections A through, I think it's L. I mean, take it in in order and hierarchy, I would I would read that as that entire section really only applies to SRA and SRB. Meaning the open space that Turniclick was just referencing, by the way, is eight thousand square feet per unit, which would require an acres worth of open space for this project, which is only on about point three acres. You know, that is also prohibitive. I don't feel as though this board has necessarily the authority, unless I'm missing it somewhere in the bylaw, to waive those requirements. I think those would require new variances. But again, as I think Attorney Click's opinion is, and again, I'm not against it, is I'm not so sure those provisions apply to the CNI district as the way that the bylaw is written. So I would want agreement from the board going forward, where you can make any where you make any, 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 any positive recommendation on this when the time comes.
Yeah. Because it's, I mean, if it's not mentioned for that zone, it's not mentioned for that zone.
Yeah, I did reach out to the building commissioner as well to get his input on it as the zoning enforcement.
Yeah, and it's
I imagine he'll agree with that take. But I don't, I don't have that yet.
Certainly does. It's one part of town that does have a lot of apartments. I think the condo building up front on Main Street, uh, was that four, five unit? Five units, if I remember yet. You've got across the street, about forty-nine main. I mean, there's a lot tucked in there.
It is your most densely populated neighborhood in town. It's also the neighborhood with the most range of
Yeah, I mean, and there's lovely old farmhouse. All right, Eric, you next. We don't, we're not making any decisions tonight anyways. We have no questions tonight.
But, um, what information, aside from what we've already spoke about tonight, is there information you would like to have ahead of the next meeting?
I would like to see the responses to your questions, and I think you can get it to us before the next meeting. Any, any feedback?
If I could just to that one, this this issue, we're not in a particular town, a pre-existing non-conformity use could go from parcel A to parcel B. And in in reading And in in reading the bylaw or the city ordinance, it became apparent that if it's silent. That it could, unless it says that it would be constrained to the perimeter. There are some towns in Massachusetts that would say, but just the town. In there, you take it by its express terms. What's not in there, it just doesn't apply.
Yeah, no, I think the fact that it calls out two districts and does not call out CNI districts.
Well, if that's the case, you would not need to grant any waivers, and they certainly wouldn't need to come back for any variances.
Would be under the special permit.
Yeah, it would just be the special permit for the use.
Yeah.
There's one special permit.
Mm hmm. Yeah.
Well, I mean, they would still need the variances for the dimensional changes, but, um. As it relates to that subsection.
But being less nonconforming is always a good thing when you're looking for variances on dimensions. You're moving, you're technically improving the situation. We always try to keep on. If David looks is gets alternate.
I don't know because he would not.
Yeah, I'm hungry. That's why I'm asking. But we need this. Watch this. All right, um. Any other audience questions, concerns?
How big for the footprint of the proposed building?
How many square feet, guys? Yeah, the building, a hundred by thirty.
A hundred by thirty. How many stories?
Two stories, two stories.
Two story.
Right on the bottom of each story, and a studio apartment above.
So each unit is how many square feet did you say?
Uh, twelve hundred square feet.
Twelve hundred per unit. And it's going to be pushed back, would you say, five, five feet from where the barn is now? I've been concerned when they knock that barn down, there's going to be a rat fest out there. That that place has got so many critters running in it and up in. And up in the other three years. No, seriously, it's just going to scurry everywhere. They would probably down into my basement.
Don't throw me down in his, his direction.
First to the rats, the mice, you know, I've been seeing that I've had, I've been there for fifteen years.
Uh, I want to, before we close this, but I want to thank everyone for coming. Uh, when you have a concern, if you have a specific concrete suggestion that helps allay that concern. That is very helpful to us. I know someone one time wanted. Fence because they're really, the original building in that case was right on the property line. I'm not even talking like inches away. I'm talking. And we had got them to move it five feet away from the property line, prove it, but they still, the neighbor wanted the fence. Uh, to block the view, and it was a great suggestion in that particular case to give it privacy. So it was not only a concern, it was a concrete suggestion. So if anybody has a concrete suggestion, that is very helpful to us. And we can put those as conditions into the, into the agreements. Okay, so the more concrete, the better. All right, um, gentlemen, do you have anything more that you'd like to add tonight? It seems like the before we. I don't need to. For continuance, or do I get?
Um, you should take a motion to formally continue the public hearing to the July sixteen.
Gentlemen, is there anything else that you'd like to cover tonight? I think you did a great job showing it is what you wanted, a great starting point.
If it goes beyond, sorry, if it goes beyond July sixteenth, we'll just need a review from the app.
Even in a term we can find a written.
Yeah, yeah, please do. Say, I don't like things sitting in front of the boards for six months. Let's figure things out. Um, anyone want to give me a motion? Continue the public hearing to Wednesday. Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Same time?
Six thirty, yeah, on Wednesday night. Yeah, we always are. It's real exciting here on Wednesday nights.
Both will try to make sure we.
Yeah. Post, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
How, how are the views? Not so good ones. They're all great. All great. I saw one of them and I was like, okay, he's full size now.
Yeah, the baby's sixteen.
Baby is sixteen. Wow. That's awesome. But thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for coming in. Okay, um, I think the next one is. Rivera on thirty three Milford Street. Is.
Not here.
They're not here.
To the chair.
Okay, you want to give these guys a brief.
Yeah. So, um. It was, so it was, it was my suggestion to the board to also continue this public hearing to July sixteenth.
Yeah.
Uh, the reason why is because the. As many of you likely, they were denied a special permit. No, just your special permit. They were denied a similar special permit, which was an application to. Yeah, to go to thirty linear feet, which is five feet above the maximum height requirement in that district. Um, actually, in their application too, they they asked for three point five stories. So in this application, which they submitted, they are requesting to receive what they already have out there, which is three stories. Uh, but. At the twenty five, that they should not be any higher than twenty five linear feet, which is the district's maximum height. The issue is that third store. Um, so they need relief for that. Um, so that, that, that is why they will be coming before this board for that is unfortunate that. They were not apparently able to attend tonight. I did ask that they still attend, but they are not here. Um, the. So you are not confused when you get it. You will be receiving another notice in the mail. Uh, from before the next meeting. What that notice will be specific to is that this board needs to make what is called a section sixteen finding. Uh, MGL chapter forty A, section sixteen, which is how I started my rambling. Uh, the, uh, they they initially filed an application which is denied less than a year ago. Which means you cannot come back to this board and ask for the same thing within two years. Unless there is a material change within the application. The, the, um, the courts have treated that as it can be, it can be a aesthetic change minimally. It just can't be. It just can't be the exact same application. So I think without, you know, I don't want the board to comment on it tonight because the it'll be posted ahead of the next hearing. But I think there's an ability for you to make a judgment call within that, so.
That is significantly different. Part of the reason we we've postponed it also is. Kind of administrative error. When they submitted the new plans, they didn't submit the plans. They submitted the old plans. We didn't get the new ones until yesterday. Okay. Uh, and and that's not enough time for public review, really. I mean.
For, for which I explained to them that you will be denied if you were submitting the exam.
Yeah, it has to be a different plan.
They know it was going to be continued in next month.
I told them that it was my suggestion, but I also did ask that they be here.
But it's, as many of you guys, I think, I think come summer, you were at the last meeting, yeah, and you know, we had discussed the twenty five. Or instead, you know, keep it to the twenty five. But and then they've done that, but we've still got to make sure that everything paperwork wise is is done, you know, and we don't have that done. You've got to make sure that we clean up all that. Um, so I apologize for dragging you out twice, but we, they gave us the wrong plan. Can't. Prove them for a three point five story house at thirty feet. Um, we've denied them that, so we have to have the right plans. So I apologize for dragging you all out tonight.
And through the, through the chair, my office is aware of all the issues that have been going on in that property.
Yeah, there's been some complaints that it's been a messy job site. Now, job sites by their very nature, especially small, they're messy. But. More could be and should be done, and how they do it is important too.
Did suggest to them ahead of the next meeting, they should address those issues.
As you know, I'm not a fan of derelict buildings around home. I think what's there is safer than what was there before. It's. Someone's going to get hurt. Uh, but we still need to do it right. So thank you for being part of that process. As we go forward, I heard me say with the other people, if you have concrete suggestions, we need, we sometimes include those in permits. So if you have that, we appreciate it. I don't want to get into a discussion of it now because we're continuing it, and they have a right to be here. When we do it, I do want to have block units here too. Because he was part of the other teams. So I'm going to look for a meeting, a motion to continue.
Yeah, I move that we continue, um, my. Thirty three Milford Street.
July six.
July sixteen.
A second. Aye. Aye, aye. Okay, uh, is there any other business before us tonight, sir?
Uh, I don't think so. I don't think we have any minutes. Um, again, Mike Antonell, director of land and housing and spectral services, please feel free to reach out to me with any questions ahead of the next.
Yeah, he's all around and she is too, and both alike.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we circulated any minutes.
No, you guys had, I think, reviewed them during the four months that we did.
Oh, that's.
You've done a workshop or something, and I think you approved the December minutes during, I wasn't there, but during that.
It's very strange.
I'm sorry, interrupt. Um, yeah, I came in on Zoom meeting in November, and then after that, I couldn't find minutes. I mean, Mike has caught me up to speed, but it's just been.
I should clear? Yes, sorry. Well, we haven't had, I mean, yes, we were.
We haven't had a meeting, that's why.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have to approve the minutes before they get posted. Uh, it's a weird thing.
I'm sure we were behind on posting minutes. Like, I know the November minutes were not posted. I think they are, um, so.
Because I couldn't find anything, like what happened.
January up until today?
Today.
There's the longest stretch. There's been no business.
There's been a lot going on.
No, but it's really, it's really crazy for us. We normally have a meeting. I've been on this board. I can't even like over that. And we've only had to cancel the meeting once. And we've gone five, six months. We're all guys. Um, I would recommend, th- these guys are super friendly.
Oh, yes.
But.
Mike's been very thoughtful.
But glad to hear that. Um, but yeah, so if we don't approve the meetings, not post, have they had those?
Everything's been posted as of Tuesday, like your Tuesday.
Have we approved the last meeting?
You guys approved them at that workshop, right?
So.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we just need to.
It wasn't, I wasn't at that one, but I'm.
We did. Yeah, we had a workshop on, we didn't actually answer it, but we had a workshop.
It was March.
Yes. Yeah, we would like to get some of those zoning laws updated, but thank you. We'll make sure. So I'll keep checking on that. Any other questions you guys have? Let's say if you have concrete suggestions. Hopefully the site will be.
It's not a good, uh, thank you. Name's Al Peladini from City Brook Street. Uh, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Uh, I came before the board a year, little over a year ago, with pretty much about the same proposal. And I stood there and I said. This proposal is out of character with the rest of the neighborhood, okay? That most of, most of the houses that were there, uh, like were built in the late eighteen sixty five, the early nineteen hundred. This end of Milford Street, Brook Street. Uh, Piccadilly, Grove Street, I mean, it's all, they're all pretty much similar. They're all home family house now. And this here proposal. Uh, it's to allow the structure of minimum height of the building to exceed two story. Now, this, the structure that has been put there is already three story.
Yes.
Now, it looks like it has a kind of like a flat roof so that they could add to the top of that at any given point in time, and according to this. Who's going to stop them? And and you could say, well, you know, we have bylaws that you can't go over so many things, but. I mean, according to this. They have that right to do that, and nobody's going to stop, and it's a very big piece of property on a very small. Piece of land. And there are other, you know, um, I mean, from the street side, and I don't know this, I'm maybe speaking out of turn here, but. It looks like it's going to be an apartment complex with three or more at least. Uh, families in there. Many steps, six slammin's. I I don't know, but street side, it looked, the three floors, it looks pretty much like an apartment building. And. Um, and here we are a year later. I I don't want you, you know, to say about that. I mean.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to say a lot.
No, it's already been done. It's already been done.
Yeah. Through the chair.
Yeah.
I don't want the board to comment, but I I as staff, I can can address some of those concerns as it is, that pertains to my office.
Yeah, I I agree because because we adjourned the meeting and they're not here, we really can't have that discussion, but he's going to hopefully mention it to you.
Well, yeah, I'm not going to, I'm not going to bother with that territory right now, but the. If.
The traffic system, have you got that?
Oh, I don't, I. I don't know what we're, we can be. Hi, I live at thirty six Milford Street, right across the street.
Yes. Why don't you go ahead and adjourn?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you'll deal with it. I move that we adjourn.
You're saying.
I don't know which.
Aye. Aye, there we go.